Hello, it's Monday evening, it's quarter past five. It's the 24th of June and I'm here inside the offices of Offaly County Council. Now, those of you that follow me will know that I did a live interview with Michelle on Thursday night and on Friday night from outside the offices of Tullamore County Council. Michelle is the lady whose family were involved in the standoff with Offaly County Council at Easter and I supported the family through that ordeal. They were eventually placed in emergency accommodation in Banaher. The centre where they were accommodated in Banaher is now being used for other purposes and the family have had to leave. They were actually asked to vacate that premises last week and the owner, rather than have them on the street, actually placed them in a cabin. And that was purely, you know, it was something that he didn't have to do. He could have just put them out on the street, but he didn't. He gave them the use of a porter cabin. The situation is that since last Tuesday, Offaly County Council have failed to find alternative accommodation for the family and the owner of the premises in Banaher naturally has had to ask the family to leave today. And there were a number of reasons why he had to ask them to leave. I've been sitting here now for the last hour with the family in Offaly County Council. The officials are aware that we are here. Nobody has come to speak with us except a security man advised us at 5 o'clock that the council offices were now closed and that we were to vacate it. And I told him respectfully that we will not be leaving until somebody speaks with us. But I know the drill, I've been down this road before. The guards will now be called and the guardie will come and ask us to leave and we will respectfully follow the instructions of the guardie. But it just goes to show the response of the council to this family of nine who literally have no place to go. The council gave them a voucher this morning saying that they will provide up to €220 per night for emergency accommodation if they can find a hotel or a B and B that will take them in. Now, you and I know that this is now high season and there is no way that any B and B or hotel in the Midlands would have vacancy for a family of nine. I just want to show you something. I'm sitting with the family for the last hour and there's seven children and little children get... The children have been so incredibly good and they're minding each other. The older ones are minding the younger ones. But one little fellow, the mother gave him something to draw on and he's after coming back to show his mammy the nice picture that he drew. And I'm just going to turn the camera around and show you what he drew. As you can see, he has written... Sorry, I have it the wrong way around. This is what he's drawn. "Mammy, Tommy, I wish I had a home." That's what the little child drew. And the irony is, and I'll turn the page over, that it was written on correspondence from Offaly County Council. Now, people will say that it's this family's own fault that they are homeless. But you see, if you have a couple of people in the country homeless, we'll say a couple of hundred people in the country homeless, you can say it's their own fault, they're alcoholics or they're what have you. Come up with some excuse to say that they are homeless. But when you have 10,300 people in the country registered as homeless and you have tens of thousands, and I mean tens of thousands of people who are not registered as homeless but who are really homeless. They are sleeping on couches, sleeping on the floor and some of them are sleeping in their car. So, when you have that number of people who are homeless, it's not individuals who are to blame, it's the system that is to blame. Now, this family have been in emergency accommodation since Easter and going on the voucher that they have just been given, €220 per night. I've done the figures. So, this is a guesstimate that over €12,000 has been spent by Offaly County Council in the last eight weeks having this family in emergency accommodation. And they are prepared to continue to pay €220 per night. Now, Kitty Holland featured this family's plight last Sunday... Sorry, last Monday in the Irish Times, a week ago today. Kitty Holland from the Irish Times is that great campaigning journalist. And she did quite a bit of research and I've posted her article and I'll post it again now as soon as I come off this live feed. Her research shows that for counties Leish, Offaly and Longford West Meath, there are currently 100 homeless children. And this year, it is estimated that it's going to cost €2.5 million on emergency accommodation. So, Offaly County Council is throwing money at the problem rather than solving it. And in my live feed last week, I said that there are several houses belonging to Offaly County Council bordered up around Tullamore. And if they handed the keys to the family tonight at one of those houses, the family are prepared to pay €100 a week. The council is going to be getting €400 a month from the family and the council is also going to be saving €220 per night. Or not the council, the taxpayer is going to be saving €220 per night. So, it's a win-win-win situation. Somebody, Linda has just said, "So the council paid €220 a night, that's €1,540 a week." Total madness. Thank you for doing the sums there Linda. That's exactly it Linda, that's exactly it in a nutshell and it is madness. And we, the taxpayers, are funding this lunacy. Now, the local guardie and Tousla have got involved to advocate on behalf of the family. And if you look at my live feed interview that I did with Michelle on Friday night, she read out the letter that was submitted by the social worker from Tousla to Offaly County Council on Friday. And in that letter to the council, the social worker stated that this family, that Michelle and her husband were exceptional in the way that they were parenting their children and doing an extremely good job under very, very difficult circumstances. And so, this actually was wonderful to think that a social worker from Tousla stepped in to advocate for the family. And this is a new departure for me, I hadn't seen this happen before and it's a very, very, very welcome development. And so, if you want to read or if you want to hear what that social worker had to say, then you can go back to my live feed with Michelle on Friday and you'll hear exactly what the social worker had to say in the letter to the council. So, that is the situation. Those of you who have just come online, I am here inside the offices of Offaly County Council in Tullamore with a family of nine. A mother, father and seven children who have been in emergency accommodation since Easter. I covered their plight in the live feed on Thursday, on Friday night. This morning, they eventually had to vacate the cabin that they were living in and I'm being called to the counter. So, they had to vacate the cabin that they were in and they are now in the offices of Offaly County Council in Tullamore. And they are... We've been asked to leave. But I have said that we won't be leaving until we see somebody. So, I've been called in with the family now. I'm going to come off this live feed and I will keep you updated on what is happening. So, thank you very much. As soon as I have further news for you, I'll come back online again and thank you. Good evening, it is Monday evening, it's gone 6 o'clock, way past 6 o'clock in fact, and it is the 24th of June and I am outside the offices of Offaly County Council with Michelle. Some of you may have seen my earlier video inside the council offices. For those of you who are coming online for the first time, I'll just fill you in briefly. Michelle is the mother of the family of seven children and the father who were involved in the standoff at Easter in the emergency accommodation. They were eventually accommodated in emergency accommodation in Banaher. That accommodation was no longer available to them this week but they were put into a cabin at the back. I did a live interview with Michelle on Thursday and on Friday night outlining the conditions in which they were living. And I got Michelle to read out the letter that was written by the social worker from Tousla on Friday which was submitted to Offaly County Council. And it was a letter in which the social worker described the excellent parenting of Michelle and her husband, described the horrendous conditions that they were living in and said that the council had to provide them with proper accommodation to meet their needs. The local guardie are also assisting the family and one of the guardie actually, when he saw the conditions in which they were living, was absolutely appalled and he immediately emailed the county council to inform them of his disquiet at the conditions in which the family were living. That was Friday evening. The owner of the hotel allowed the family to remain in the cabin over the weekend and he did so out of the goodness of his heart because there was no place for the family to go. The council had given the family a voucher for €220 but there was no place that they could go with this because it wasn't worth the paper. It was written on, no hotel or B and B was available in the Midlands for the family. So, the owner of this hotel allowed the family to remain in the cabin over the weekend but today, he said that they would have to vacate it by today, which they did. I accompanied Michelle to Offaly County Council offices this afternoon. We sat for hours and nobody actually came to speak with the family. I did approach a person that was working for the council. He was an employee, not in the housing section. I explained the situation to him. I said, "Could you go in there please and tell somebody that we're out here?" We sat and sat and sat, nothing happened. Then, we were approached at 5 o'clock by a security guard who told us that the building was now being locked and that we had to leave. And I said that we wouldn't be leaving until somebody spoke to us. And he said, "But, you know, we had to leave." And I said, "No, but I said, 'I know the drill.' I said, 'You're going to tell me that you're going to call the guardie and they will come and put us out.'" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "That's okay, you have done your job. I've been down this road before in Offaly County Council where the guardie were called to put me out." So, I then went live on Facebook and a couple of minutes into my livestream, suddenly, suddenly, there was somebody available to talk to the family. And they said that they had accommodation for them. And that would the family take it? It was in Trim, in County Meath, which is two counties away. So, the official went away and gave Michelle and her husband a moment, well, gave them time to consider the offer and they felt that they were going to have to accept this offer of the accommodation in County Meath because the alternative would be to sleep on the street. And one of the children, it's their birthday today. So, I suppose that was the choice that they had. To sleep on the street or go to Trim with the children and that they would have a bed for the night. But then there was the issue of school in the morning in Tullamore. And all of their belongings is back at their accommodation in Banaher. Even though they have moved out, the owner of the accommodation has been very accommodating and has said that he will store their belongings until they find a place. So, all of their belongings are in Banaher, which is an hour's drive, I suppose, west of here. And Trim is an hour's drive to the north east. You're looking at the guts of two and a half hours drive between... So, an hour's drive down to Banaher to get their stuff and then a two and a half hour drive from Banaher back to Trim. So, that is the situation. Now, you're not going to believe this. The council are paying €260 for the accommodation tonight. So, I'm just going to turn the camera around and show it to you. That's what's paid, €260.25. And the situation is that the official in the council has said that this accommodation may be available for more than one night. They'll see how things go tonight. So, like, it's crazy. Over €1,000, over €1,000 for four nights the council are prepared to throw out. This is taxpayers' money. This is ridiculous. I pointed out... Now, okay, before I start, a second official came and those two officials deal with emergency accommodation only. And they're in a very, very difficult position. At the end of the day, they are mothers like myself. They're younger than me. I don't know anything about them but I guess, you know, that they're married with children and this is their job. It's a job they have to do, is to meet the hordes of people that are becoming homeless. Coming to the window every day and they have to deal with it. Deal with the growing situation that is actually getting worse. As was seen in Kitty Holland's article last week, there are now 100 children homeless in the counties of Leish, Offaly, Longford West Meath and the problem of homelessness is getting worse. €2.5 million will be spent this year on emergency accommodation. I pointed out to these officials that since Easter, in the last eight weeks, over €12,000 has been paid out for this family in emergency accommodation. And we're right back to where we were eight weeks ago. Now, they said to me that they only deal with emergency accommodation and that's it. They have no role whatsoever to play in the allocation of houses. And I pointed out to them that if the council was to provide the family with one of the houses that were boarded up, the family are prepared to pay €400 a week, €400 a month and the council will be saved thousands of euro. And I want to point out that throughout all of this ordeal, Michelle has been paying €80 a week to Offaly County Council, even when they were living in the cabin. So, and I suppose now we're beginning to see firsthand, we're beginning to see firsthand what is going on around the country. The officials said that they would put the family in contact with the Peter McFerry Trust. Now, I have written an article and I'll try and dig it out about the charities. Oh my God, don't get me going on charities. It has been documented in the newspapers and in mainstream media that these charities have become a massive money spinner. I know that in the case of the Peter McFerry Trust, I'll have to dig out the figures. I know the amount of money that was allocated to the Peter McFerry Trust actually was less than what the Peter McFerry Trust was paying out in salaries. And they have a number of people being paid in excess of €100,000 a year in salaries. And the article says that there's massive duplication, that you have several charities in Dublin dealing with homelessness, all of them with chief executive officers, all on salaries in excess of €100,000. So, the charity industry has become a massive money spinner. So, that's for another day. So, what is happening with Michelle and her family is just a microcosm, a microcosm of what has been replicated right across the country. So, I'm going to talk now to Michelle for a few minutes. As you can imagine, she's absolutely exhausted. She's in the council this morning, she's after spending the afternoon in the council with seven children. It's not an easy thing to do on a hot day, on a really hot day, trying to... Trying to... And her youngest child is three. Trying to get the children to sit still and they were so mannerly and they were so excellent. So, Michelle, how are you feeling right now?
I'm just so tired, to be honest Anna. I think I'm coming down with a throat infection. So, if I'm not talking the greatest, I apologise.
You... Right. So, Michelle, what have you to do? I know that yourself and your husband were in discussion about whether or not you would go back to Banaher to get some stuff and then go to Trim or go directly from here to Trim. Have you decided what you're going to do?
At this stage, I'd say we'd probably just go to Trim Anna because I have some essentials for the kids in the car.
Right.
It's late now so I have... I'm aware that I have to feed the children and get them to bed. So, it's going to be extra. You know, the kids are going to be tired in the car and... So, the quicker I get to Trim, the better for the children and get them settled in.
Okay. Do you have a change of clothes with you?
No.
You've no change of clothes?
No.
So, and you have no toiletries or anything like that?
No.
So, well, there will be toiletries in the hotel and there will be towels and things like that. So...
The kids will just have to wear the clothes they had today Anna, till like, you know, it's only till 10 in the morning, so...
You have to be out?
Yeah, that's the booking.
The booking, you have to be out by 10 in the morning? And then it's back to Tullamore?
Back to Banaher, I suppose, to get... Well, back to Tullamore, yeah, and then see what the day brings. Well, I have to get the children's clothes and stuff.
Right.
So, that'll be important.
Right, okay. Now, I know that the older children were starting to kick up and I had to take them aside and being the Irish mammy, I had to give them a little talking to. You know, they were starting to kick up because they didn't want, you know...
They don't want to go to Trim Anna.
They don't want to go to Trim.
No. Their friends is around her, you know, their whole support, everything.
Yeah. So, and the ombudsman for children has written about the effects that growing up in emergency accommodation has on children and it is really beginning to take its toll on the children. They're in a very, very loving, stable home, family life but not knowing whether they're coming or going. It's very upsetting for them.
Yeah.
And it was a beautiful hot day and those children are after spending a couple of hours now in the council offices. It was like a furnace in there and, you know, they should have been out, should have been out kicking ball. So, that then is more or less it. If you've just joined me, I'm outside the offices of Offaly County Council with Michelle. She is the lady that I interviewed last week who has been in emergency accommodation. They've had to move out of that emergency accommodation today and the family are now being sent to Trim in County Meath for the night. And it is costing the taxpayer €260.25 for the night and they have been told that there is a possibility that they will be kept on in that accommodation this week. So, you're looking at over €1,000 for four nights and this is taxpayers' money. The emergency accommodation that the family have been in for the last eight weeks, I guess, has cost in the region of €12,000. And all this family are looking for is a council house. Now, as I said in my last feed, that if you have a couple of hundred people who are homeless, then, you know, we can turn around and say, "It's their fault." You know, they had a problem, they were on drink, they were on drugs, they were this, that or the other. But when you have 10,300 people registered as homeless and tens of thousands of other people who are not registered as homeless because they're sleeping on couches, sleeping on the floor, sleeping in cars, then the system is broken. The system is broken. And there is millions of euro being thrown at this problem and it's worse, it's getting, not better because of government ideology. This is what happens when you leave it to the private sector to provide accommodation for people. This is what happens. And this problem is not going to be sorted out until there is a massive programme of rebuilding social housing in this country. There is no other way of doing it. So, you can play your part in this. You can play your part in this. Jean Kerrigan wrote an excellent article in yesterday's Independent in which he said that as Irish people, we're fantastic at looking to the past and saying, "Oh, how did past generations do what they did? How could they be so cruel?" But we turn a blind eye to the suffering that's happening in our country at the minute. And he actually speaks about the homeless crisis. And he said, "In a few decades, the people, you know, in 20 or 30 years' time, will look to us and say, 'How did we allow such cruelty to take place?'" Now, you have a choice. You can turn a blind eye to what is happening or you can get word out there to more people. And the more people that know about this and take action, the more pressure that's going to come on the government. And I know that sounds terribly preachy. Now, I'm going out live on Facebook but I have set up a new YouTube channel which is a much better platform from which you can go live and you can reach more people. But I need a thousand people to subscribe to that channel before YouTube will allow me to go live on it. I'm only reaching the people now that are on Facebook and not everybody is on Facebook. So, I'll put up the link, I'll put up the link under this post or in this post to my YouTube channel. No, it's a link to a little trailer that I did explaining everything and I'll put up the link to the YouTube channel. So, please, you can help me get word out there of what's happening in this country if you subscribe to that channel. And I do know that you care. I do know that the people that come on my page, that my friends and followers really are people with a great heart because I know from your comments and I know that you're very, very concerned. "I can't do this, I'm just the face on the camera." You know, that's what I'm doing. But I could be talking to myself were it not for you. So, we're in this together and we're going to work together now to get word out there. The more people that start becoming involved in this, then the pressure is going to pile on the politicians to change what's happening. Now, I'm going to... I know my social media is being monitored and I'm going to say this specifically to Leah Vradkar, auntie Leah Vradkar. I actually tagged you in a post this morning and there are groups of people who are using peaceful, democratic means to try and agitate for social justice in this country. If you ignore the pleas of these people using peaceful means, then I'm afraid to say that history teaches us that it becomes inevitable that people resort to violence. There's a head of steam building in this country. More and more people are being pushed to the margins and it is only a matter of time before all hell breaks loose. Do we have to be pushed to the edge before we do something? So, I am hopeful now that the politicians that are watching this will get their heads together now and start to act to resolve these various crises that are affecting the country. And thank you so much. country and thank you so much for watching and please share, thank you.